Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Kent City Council. Where are we? We're committed as a whole, right?
Yes.
Committed as a whole, forgive me. All right. We've got a couple of things on our agenda tonight. Pretty packed here, so we'll get through it. Let's get started here. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Council President. Council President Boyce.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Core.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Michelle.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Troutner.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Any changes to the agenda, Pat? You good? I know item 4C, I will shift that down.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. And then, Councilmember, we good? If not, I ask for a motion, please, on the agenda.
Mr. President, I would move to approve of the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, signify by a percent. Aye?
Aye.
Aye or opposed? Okay. All right, we're gonna move on here. Let's start off with item number A. Approval of minutes for the prior committee meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, in discussion. See none, all in favor, signify by a percent. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show your numbers pass. Move on to item B. Payment of the bills. Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of payment of the bills.
Second.
Motion is second, in discussion. See none, all in favor, signify by a percent. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show your numbers pass. Item 4C, we're gonna push that off to the side for a minute, and we'll come back to it. Waiting for Judge to show up. So we're gonna move on to item number D, where we got property insurance renewal. Elaine?
Good afternoon, Council President, Council members. My name's Elaine Wee. As some of you may know, back in April, I assumed the position of risk manager when Chris Hill retired from the city of Kent. I'm here today to discuss the city's property insurance renewals for 2023-24. There are three policies that renewed on July 1st. Those were property, crime, and fidelity, and drones. Procuring insurance for a jurisdiction as large as the city of Kent is quite costly, and this year, the city's premiums increased 34%. This includes an increase in the insured values. We added, we also added property, like the fixtures at the new Kirsten Park. So there are two main factors that attributed to the increasing premiums, and I'll be discussing those in the next two slides. But overall, the coverage and the policy limits remain the same. So, construction cost trends continue to rise and drive up the cost of premiums. Material costs and supply chain issues have somewhat diminished. However, the issue now becomes labor. So there's a shortage of workers and the need to increase wages, and this is impacting both the cost of existing and new bids. And the second factor that continues to affect rising premiums are the catastrophic losses that have affected the insurance industry. In 2002, you'll see Winter Storm Elliott and Hurricanes Nicole and Ian were major losses for the industry. And if you look back the last six years, five of those years have well surpassed what the industry has projected to be losses. So this continues to be an issue for the industry. Some of you may have seen recently in the news that insurance companies like Allstate and State Farm are pulling out of some markets in California and Florida because of wildfires and storms. And so, it's a very hard market out there right now. The next slide, some of you may be familiar with from Chris's previous presentations. This is the structure of the different layers of property insurance that the city has. We continue to maintain $25 million of coverage for flood and earthquake, and then all risk up to $150 million. The deductible for the city remains $100,000. And you may notice that the slight change is that there are different companies or combinations of companies maintaining the different layers of insurance now. So the other two policies that renewed were crime and fidelity. Luckily, the crime premium did not increase at all, and drones increased about 10%. This is a fairly new type of insurance, and so they attribute the increase to the market preparing for possible future losses in the future. So, looking ahead, the next insurance renewal that we have will be in January for the city's liability excess. You, we will, our self-insured retention is somewhat equal to, like, the city's deductible. And so, for the last two years, in 2002 and 2023, our SIR has remained the same. But in January, we anticipate that will be presented with a few options to possibly increase that SIR. And much like property renewals, this premium will likely, again, increase. And that has a lot to do with police and auto claims that continue to drive the market. And it's, you know, we believe that the, our insurers are likely trying to bring Kent up to the same SIR as our comparable peer cities, like Bellevue and Everett. So that was kind of a quick presentation. If you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Might be a silly question, but what does drone insurance cover?
Pardon?
What does drone insurance cover?
So drones are considered unmanned aircrafts, and so, the city has several of them through the police department. So if it were to crash or cause damage while it's being used, it would be, it would provide that kind of coverage.
Well, that 34% increase is seeming to be pretty healthy, isn't it?
Pardon?
That 34% increase seeming to be pretty...
Yes.
Pretty good size, wow.
A very sizable increase.
Wow. Hey, thanks for your part. This is your first one, right?
Yes.
So, thank you, and officially, welcome to the team. Glad to have you, right? So that's awesome.
Yes, I'm very happy to be at Kent. Thank you.
Any question, team, Elaine? I'm gonna ask for a motion, please.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the city's renewal of its property, crime, and drone insurance coverage for July 1st, 2023 through June 30th of 2024, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city's risk manager and ratify all prior acts consistent with this motion.
Second.
Motion is second, in discussion, team. See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold on, hold on, take a breath. Councilmember Fincher, I'm sorry. Please.
That's great. My questions are also on the drone. So some of these things in here, for instance, the hijacking, is that if our drone gets hijacked by someone else, as far as it's flying and someone takes over the flying? Is it, some of these things were just things I would've never thought of?
Yeah, I'll have to check into that one. I didn't see a reference to hijacking. But I could definitely check into that and get back to you, Councilmember.
And there's a number, so we can have a conversation, like the noise. I'm sure that we're going to be under the level of noise, noise pollution that it talks about, and some of these things, just have questions about.
Sure.
Thank you. I'm still ready to vote. I just want clarification for myself.
We're cheaper deal back here? No?
Yeah.
It's come on hijacking. We just gotta make sure we watch Councilmember Fincher, so.
[laughing]
Okay, all in favor, signify by a percent. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let the record show your numbers pass. Thank you, Elaine. Glad to have you on the team, once again.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move back to item number C. Let the team show it up here for the drug treatment funding. Paula, you gonna, oh, here we go. Pat?
Sorry, thank, thank you, Mr. President. I'm counsel, Pat, it's Patrick, CIO for the city of Kent. Today, we're gonna be presenting to you a budget adjustment for the use of opioid lawsuit funds to help fund our community court. And I just wanna back up a bit. This is made possible by a decision that council made many years ago to join in the class action lawsuit. Well, it wasn't exactly a class action, but to join other cities, counties, and other government agencies across the country to address the, I guess, injustice committed by opioid companies and their distributors. And at that time, I was really skeptical as to whether or not this council would ever see any funding from it. I told you not to expect a penny. And, but it turns out that this was a very successful litigation process. It's ongoing as well. We will be receiving money for at least the next, I think, 17 years in installments. We haven't, we don't have a final tally of what we will be receiving, but the money is enough that we can do something to address the problem that opioids have caused in our community. So, backing up to just a few months ago, when staff came to you with the proposed local ordinance regarding drug use, one of the components of that was that we would be an agency that would directly fund treatment. And so, despite the fact that our ordinance had to be withdrawn because of the state preempting us, we wanna make sure that we still come through with that commitment to provide funding for treatment services for our offenders. So, tonight, we're presenting to you a budget adjustment. But before we get to that, we have Judge Franz, our presiding judge, he's gonna talk a little bit about community court. And he's gonna talk about how our community court works, some of the differences between our court and other agencies, and how the court can leverage these funds to help people with this problem. So, I'd like to invite Judge Franz up. And then, after Judge Franz, Paula Painter will come up and talk about the budget side of it. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. Well, I've been here in the past talking about community court, and I'm happy to report we're having some very exciting times in our community court program right now. As I've discussed in the past, our goal is to provide opportunity and assistance to individuals who are struggling with challenges related to poverty, mental health, and severe addiction. One of the weaknesses we've had in the past is our community court meets once a month, and we connect as many people as we can within that timeframe. But I think the last time I was here, what I was sharing with you was, we were trying to come up with a new procedure whereby we can connect people more quickly. We can connect people on the spot as the need arises. In May, we hired a new position within the probation department that we have entitled the resource coordinator. And this, this person, her name is Josie Hildebrandt, very experienced in social work. Before she came with us, she worked for Reach. And she's at the court full-time. They're ready to meet with individuals that fall into this category and connect them to resources. She meets with them individually, comes up with individualized plans addressing their specific needs, and then connects them to the appropriate resources based upon that plan. She started full-time in the first week of May and has already met with almost 100, I think as of this morning, it was 148 people that she has met with and created individualized plans for just over the last 90 days. So as these drug treatment cases come through, what our plan is, is to attach them to the community court calendar as well. These are individuals that we're already meeting with. There's a lot of overlap there. So we're already servicing a lot of these folks. And with our resource coordinator, we expect we'll be able to provide treatment services, housing services, and job training services very quickly and as the need arises. So, it's very exciting for us in the community court program right now. We've been headed in this direction for an extended period of time, and we're finally there now. And I expect a lot of positive results to come from it. What's important for a lot of folks, maybe, and again, when you're dealing with opioid addiction and fentanyl addiction, the treatment is oftentimes just the beginning. And it's usually detox, you know, a few days in detox, followed by an extended inpatient program, followed by outpatient and monitoring through our probation department. It's an enormous amount of work. But if there isn't services set up for housing and for job training to follow, then that hopelessness can kick back in, and all that work can be lost. And that's really one of the biggest challenges. When you get somebody through that treatment door and they have success to see it get washed away because those additional opportunities are not there, it's probably the most disheartening thing that we experience. With the programs that we have in place now with our resource coordinator and the number of resources that we can connect individuals to, that is a gap that I feel very confident we'll be able to bridge. So it's, it's, like I said, it's very exciting times for our community court program right now.
So, you talk about a lot of things working real well, which is good. Are there any challenges and opportunities you see that we could do better on and help improve the process?
Well, so, the funding piece, we just completed. We had a one-year grant from the state. And it was, I think we had about $150,000. We only spent about 42 of it. I don't see treatment costs being a big hurdle here. And the reason for that is, our resource coordinator is able to connect individuals to programs that will accept the insurance that they have, number one. Secondly, we have recently formed a partnership with our local DSHS office. They are now coming to our court at least once a month, and our resource coordinator has a direct connection to them. Individuals coming through that do not have insurance can get that insurance turned on within 24 hours. Get food stamps and EBT services turned on within 24 hours. So, with individuals coming in, being insured, I don't think the treatment cost is gonna be where the bulk of the expenditure is. Unless there's, you know, if there's kind of an emergency situation where medical assisted treatment needs to happen right away, that might be something that takes up some costs. But most of our, most of the programs we're seeing are being covered by insurance right now. So I don't think financially, it's gonna be, I don't think the finances are gonna be a huge blockade. We're covering, we're covering the cost of evaluations. We're covering the cost of emergency services, like for medical assisted treatment, things of that nature.
Okay. So in your opinion, this is a success story?
It, it is. And now, I'm, and everybody will tell you at the court, I'm probably the most optimistic person in the building, always. But, yes, and it's headed in the right direction. It's taken a long time for us to get to this point. I mean, I've been harping on DSHS for the last two years, and we're finally there with them as a partner with us. It's very exciting for us.
Well, thank you for your leadership. Really appreciate that. So I can tell you're passionate about this here, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's see here. Councilmember Fincher, follow my core.
I wanna thank you and your staff, too, for the leadership that you've shown in this. I think it's very impressive, the work that you've done there, and to be able to see people who are coming time and time again, and having all of the services there instead of having to go to point A today, and point B in three days, and then over to point C in six days, and to keep all of that in place, especially when some of them don't have the same bed to lay their head in every single evening. I think it's, you guys have done a tremendous job there. And one of the things that I was most impressed by was to know that you have at least one, I don't know if there are more by now, but one individual who had finished his treatment, and because of the relationship rapport that you built with him, still comes back and meets regularly with you. So kudos to both of the two of you for that. But thank you, guys, and that's the full staff. So thank you, guys, very much. And I would heartily support increasing the program. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Core?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Judge Franz, for making time to coming down here. And thank you for your optimism, because that is needed most of the time. And I appreciate all the work that's been put into this. My question is about if, if you have numbers, and you could probably get them, somebody can get them to us later on, how many individuals are actually taking advantage of this program? And how many of them are turning it down, maybe? And if you have success stories, I think it'd be great for us to learn that as we look at funding going further. And I think it'll help, I think council is willing to support this program further. Speaking for myself, I am, so. But I appreciate you coming down here, and I hope you can maybe give us those numbers. That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have those exact numbers with me at the moment. We can certainly provide them. I think that with the, with the addition of the resource coordinator and DSHS now being on board, and where the program is headed, those numbers are going to improve rather dramatically over the long haul. Like I said, the program's kind of been building up to this point. I've known that this is where we need to be, and we're, we've just now gotten there in the last 90 days. So I'm, I'm very excited about where it's headed.
Councilmember Michelle?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Judge Franz, for being here. And I know earlier in the year, you sent me a long email telling me how our community court is different than others and how this works better here in Kent. So I appreciate you taking the time to do that. My question today is, you mentioned that treatment won't use up many, much funds. So where is the money going?
Well, I think there will still be scenarios where funds are needed for treatment. I don't think that's where the bulk of it is gonna go because of our ability to get people insured and have insurance cover that for the most part. But there's a myriad of other things and other challenges that folks need help with, starting with, you know, ID, for example. A lot of folks don't have ID. A lot of folks need a permanent address in order to make a lot of these services work, in order to get a photo ID. Cell phone, it's very difficult for folks to even survive in this society without, without a smartphone. There are many resources that they can't access without being able to get on the internet and access their websites. Medical, medical assisted treatment isn't always covered by all insurance. Additional monitoring through UAs, through SCRAM devices, things of that nature, to ensure that individuals maintaining sobriety after the complete treatment. Other things that we like to provide on the community court calendar, such as hygiene supplies, food items, and bus passes, and transportation costs, and things of that nature. So, you know, we really try and make it a wraparound, service-oriented program. And so that's where a lot of the costs can, can be borne.
Any other question, team? Okay, I'm gonna ask for a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President, as one of the optimists up here.
Oh, hold on, take a breath.
Paula.
Paula. Sorry, I'm sorry. Hey, the money part, I'm sorry. Keep going.
Council President Boyce and members of city council. Yes, I know, it's a very exciting topic. Anyways, I am Paula Painter, Finance Director, and I wanna talk about the money piece, which is really what you're gonna be making this motion on. As Judge Franz mentioned, there was a grant that did expire in June of 2023, so just last month. They were able to use about $42,000 of that $150,000 grant. Currently, the budget's set to where $100,000 of ARPA funding could be used for this program. But when you have the opioid dollars with such restrictions on them, you wanna be able to, every opportunity we have to tap into those dollars. So what we're gonna be looking to do is reverse a good portion of the funding source, so we're not using nearly as much of those ARPA dollars. We'll put them back in that bucket. We'll have them to repurpose. We are gonna have a conversation about that next month, so we can hear a little bit more about that part of it. But then what we wanna do is be able to establish the budget, the funding, using these opioid settlement dollars. Right now, we have, there's two different lawsuits that have, that have settled. And they would be grossing just over $2 million, $2.1 million in settlement distributions to the city. However, we do have to pay fees out of that. We need to pay, out of the first seven distributions, 15% to cover our, to cover the attorney fees and the cost of litigating these cases. And then also, King County was required to set up the opioid abatement council. That would be- would be overseeing how cities are spending this and reporting on that. And that would be another 10% out of all of the distributions of the, this funding. And the, the 10% is the maximum. If it does cost them less to be able to do that, then they will be taking less, less funding. Overall, taking out the distributions, we're estimating to get nearly $1.8 million over that 17 years. So it's a pretty big span of time, averaging about 105,000 a year. Most of the distributions are going to fall between 95,000 and 123,000 each year. You have some that are lower, some that are higher, just to kind of give you a ballpark there. When it comes to reducing this budget, you're going to see the reduction of the ARPA funding coming on a quarterly budget adjustment, and that's where you'll see the exact dollar. What we need to determine is what won't be funded by the, or what can't be funded by the opioid dollars. And so we're going to leave just enough behind to be able to cover those sorts of things, but then everything else will be adjusted. At the end of 2022, we did receive in $86,000 in the first distribution of, of settlement dollars. None of the fees came out of that. All the fees start in 2023. And that is pretty much, so it's sitting there. We're going to get a net of $161,000 in 2023.
Good, good, good. Awesome.
So I am happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
Forgot you controlled the money, so forgive me, please. Any question for Paula? Pat, please?
One quick note, you don't have to go anywhere. I just want to note that there are a number of cases that still are in negotiation. Purdue Pharma is one of the biggest, and we're still waiting for that to get through the bankruptcy process. And then there are others that will follow. So this isn't the final number. We anticipate seeing additional funds tacked on to that, so.
Hey, no question?
All right.
How about a motion now?
Yes, Mr. President, as one of the optimists up here, I'm ready. Mr. President, I move to authorize the reversal of a portion of the established ARPA budget for the funding of the community court and established funding from the opioid settlement beginning in 2023.
Second.
Motion to second and discussion, team? CNN, all in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Our polls, let the record show you now it's passed. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good job, keep up the good work. Now we'll get back in order here. Item number E, James Endicott purchase for, is it Karasoff? Is that how you pronounce that?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. James Endicott, IT Information Secur, sorry, Infrastructure and Security Operations Manager. I have two items here for you guys tonight. First one is going to be a request to enter into an agreement with Karasoff under the NASBO contract. Karasoff is a vendor that we engage with frequently to deliver cloud-based solutions, hardware, things like that. We currently have a purchase that we're recommending on making, it's about 35,000. And with that current purchase, that would take us over the mayor's authority. So we're just seeking approval to enter into this contract so we can get council approval and then really affects anything moving forward, assuming it's within our budget and the contract is still in effect. Any questions?
Any question? Before we vote, I'm going to move on to number six. Let's do them.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the next one that I'm bringing forward is just an amendment for a renewal for Civics Plus, which is the See Click Fix application that we use for Public Works, ECD, really to allow the citizens of Kent to report certain types of things. And this is just an amendment to increase the authority, same concept is that this contract is exceeded. With this purchase, we'll exceed the current authorities who are coming to council so we can get extended authority.
Okay, any question for James in IT?
CNN, Mr. President, I move to authorize the IT director to purchase through the cooperative purchasing agreement the State Department of Enterprise Services has with Karasoff. If those purchases are within the city's established budgets and made during the term of the state contract, which is in effect through September 16th, 2026, or any later contract extension the state may authorize.
Second.
Motion to second and in discussion, question for James? CNN, all in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Our polls, let the record show you now it's passed. Thank you, sir. Let's have our item number F.
Yes, so the second one, Mr. President, I would move to authorize the mayor to sign the services renewal agreement, Civic Plus LLC, in the amount of $63,997.47, subject to the final terms and conditions acceptable to the IT director and city attorney.
Second. Oh, sorry.
I'm almost done. It's a long motion. To authorize the IT director to sign future renewals that are within the established budgets and to ratify past actions consistent with this motion.
I will second that.
Motion to second and discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Our polls, let the record show you now it's passed. Thank you for James, appreciate you. Okay, we're going to move on to our other committee reports. ECDC, we have method report this time around. Parks don't have any report this time around. Public safety.
Thank you, Council.
Councilmember McCorr.
Thank you, Council President. We have information-only item, update on city's camping ordinance, Commander O'Reilly.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna hog the stage for just a minute and just do a quick intro. Thank you. So we do have Commander O'Reilly here and Sergeant Kelso, and they're the, they're the boots on the ground and they're the ones who are really running the program. I just want to do a quick look back. Late last year, council passed an ordinance which was really focused on ensuring that city's property that was designed for a specific purpose continues to be usable for that purpose, really focusing on parks and sidewalks and environmentally sensitive areas, which is a, which is a big issue that we deal with when we're dealing with encampments. So the ordinance made it unlawful for individuals to set up living spaces in those areas and because they interfere with the intended purpose and the investment that the city makes and the expectation of the public. So I just want to remind the council, when the ordinance was passed, we made it very clear that there was not going to be change seen overnight, and that was for a couple of reasons. Mainly because it's a new program, it takes a little while to get in place, but also number two, we, as you know, have had a significant staffing shortage. So I just want to note that we did staff up the unit and promptly one of our officers went out with an injury trying to take down a felon. So that person should be back on board in a, in a number of weeks here, and so we should be back up to a higher staffing level. The other issue that we had is in the past, we have utilized a contractor for removing camps that are in unlawful places and just a couple of council meetings ago. And that contractor has been out. As you know, we had a number of people come to council a few weeks ago addressing an apartment complex and we promptly went in there. Sergeant Kelso did incredible work, and he'll talk about that a little bit. And we cleaned that up because we have a contractor to go out there and, and clean this up, clean that, clean that up. And one of the things we're looking at with Public Works is getting a number of contractors on boards, that we're not reliant on one that finishes one and then moves on to the next, but that we can maybe have multiple groups working to clean up simultaneously. The final thing I'm going to say is, you just had the presentation on the community court, and I, it's, it's important for the public to realize that our public agencies are working in areas they never had to work before. Courts didn't have to do what Judge Franz talked about. They weren't into setting up housing and doing those things at a municipal court level. We're now in that business, and it takes resources that we didn't have before. So we have to shift things and, and change the way we do business. This problem is the same. We have officers who are doing work that's not traditional police work, it's becoming traditional now, I'd say. But we also have park, park staff and public works staff that spend an immense amount of time and resources dealing with these problems. So while the public gets upset at what they see, we also have to fund all this stuff, and it's not easy. So we're working within our means, we're working hard, and we have incredible staff that works this problem. And I will introduce one of them as Commander O'Reilly. Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilmembers. We're here to talk about just what Mr. Fitzpatrick just spoke about. We're going to discuss challenges of enforcement, the camping ordinance, the legal framework that we work under. We have different types of camps. No camp is equal, they're all a little bit different. And then solutions that we have to address the issues. Okay, some of our challenges. Obviously, CAO was just talking about limited resources. We used to have one sergeant and eight officers to take on this challenge. We grew 50% in size from one sergeant and one officer to one sergeant and two officers. And then, as he said, Officer Lentz went and got injured. As you know, we're the community services unit. So it's special operations unit and the neighborhood response team, which also has, supposed to have one sergeant and four officers, and they had just one officer for a long time. And we have Sergeant Makings, and we brought on a second officer, Officer Fisher, to that team. Oftentimes, they have overlapping missions, right? And so it's my expectation as the commander of that unit is for them to work together on shared problems and to be force multipliers. So at times we'll have SOU helping NRT with a neighborhood response team problem and vice versa. Well, Officer Steppis happened to be on the same call as Officer Lentz, and he promptly got injured as well. So we're down 50% with our NRT and 50% with SOU. They're actually, both, we should have an update on them before the end of the week, which I'm happy about, at least with one of them. So that's where we're at with that. Obviously, we have to follow our process, case law requires it. The new code has certainly helped with providing clarity when we're addressing these issues and, and it allows us to focus on areas that are set aside for public benefit. And obviously, we don't do this alone. This is a, this is a big deal. We have our homeless internal task force that we work with. It requires us partnering with parks, Public Works, a number of resources that are external from the city. We, we work with human services inside the city, but we also work with organizations like Union Gospel Mission, Catholic Community Services, Pierre Kent. And everybody's got their own schedules, and so we, it requires a lot of front, frontloading ahead of time to get all of these resources to work at the same time in order to accomplish a task. This is what we're seeing. Parks and public spaces, in parks, camps are in low-use areas, generally speaking. In public spaces, we're seeing them, they're more, a little more off the grid. We do get timely reporting from our partners in parks and public works, and that's very helpful in identifying these problems early so we can intervene early. We're seeing that campers are initially open to resources, but then sometimes we'll, we'll decide, maybe I don't want to do this. They're not ready yet, right? You see a lot of these intervention shows, and you may have experienced that in your own families or friends, that oftentimes somebody who might be homeless, who might also have some drug issues or alcohol issues, addiction issues, that it takes one to two to three to maybe 10 times before they're ready. And we're also seeing, word gets out, they speak, people speak, and they're looking to avoid arrests sometimes. So hey, yeah, I'll, I'll volunteer to accept resources, right? Because I know you're, you're not going to bring the law down on me, right? And, and then they'll change their minds later, right? That's another thing we're seeing, some booking concerns. And this isn't just for homeless activity. I swallow drugs. That's probably the biggest go-to line that we see when we contact and we're making arrests on somebody right now. It's, it's, it's a big challenge. Mental health concerns and injuries that have to be dealt with that might not make them bookable at the time. And the jail's full. A lot of times, the jail is full, and the way I understand it, oftentimes, we'll have mental, a person that's, has some mental health concerns and they're waiting to be reviewed, they can only occupy one cell. So if you have 16 people in individual cells, that's 16 people that we now can't book. So oftentimes, we'll have situations where it'll be a mandatory bookings, meaning like domestic violence and DUIs only. Alternatives to camp being arrested are effective. We are seeing that people do accept resources when we do offer. And you know, people comply. We come out, we give them the laydown, and this is what's acceptable for Kent, this is what the law says, and this is our expectation. And people are moving on before we even get down to the part where there's, somebody's needs to be held accountable. Warrant arrests, that's just one example. Warrant arrests, sometimes people have warrants and they go to jail, and so it's solved that way. Not all camps are equal. Like I said earlier, we have to determine where these camps are at, right? Because each one has a different offshoot and process that we've got to follow, whether it's on public, we work with our partners at Public Works. If it's at a park, we work with our partners in the Parks Department. If it's on private, we work with the, we have to determine who's the owner of that land or that property, and then work with that person. Larger camps, there's a, as you guys know, it's a 48-hour period that we offer people for a warning. Oftentimes with a larger camp, that's just not reasonable. It's, it's just simply not. And particularly, so we will work with them to give them more time to, to work through that problem. We take the extra step to check in on them during this period. Oftentimes Sergeant Kelso and Officer Hamilton and Officer Lentz, they'll go out multiple times to check progress. Hey, how's it going? What, what stumbling blocks are you guys seeing here if that's a problem? And if they are working towards it and they're cleaning up their own mess, then we're going to give them a little bit more time to accomplish that. Scheduling resources, kind of like what I talked about earlier. In a larger camp, we want to physically bring the people who are there to help them out of their situation to begin with. So it's, we got to set that up. And then coordinating officers from our other teams, so from the neighborhood response team for SOU. Or we might ask somebody from the patrol division to help us out as, as well. Pretty much anybody that we're going to lean on and partner with to accomplish our task. Solutions, we talked about staffing, and boy, as chief has reported a number of times, we've, we're hiring like crazy this year, and it's just getting people through training now. So as patrol grows, SOU can grow and NRT can grow. Obviously, with more people, will be more impactful. And thinking you have more patrol officers patrolling on the streets, more SOU officers on bikes in these areas, it's going to not just be for us to handle each encampment, it's deterring too, right? If you have people out on patrol. Investment and support services, regional investments and support services like mental health and addiction care, critical to addressing these issues. Sergeant Kelso and I participated in a, a work group with a number of other agencies and helped provide input this year. And we talked about the, identifying the potential five regional centers, kind of like the Arizona, not kind of like, exactly like the Arizona model, I think some of you have visited it. So we see that as a, a potential investment. And the changes with our Kent City Code and our S, and our standard operating procedures has provided more clarification in our process. So short-term, we aim to get the people who are homeless off the street quickly. We've been providing resources and education, just like I said earlier about the laws related to camping. Ultimately, if they're not getting with that program, we're going to hold them accountable through either an at-large filing and then ultimately an arrest. Long-term strategies, as officers complete their training, as I said in the last slide, patrol will grow, SOU will be able to grow, NRT will grow. And we'll continue to increase our partnership with our resource providers. We're always looking for new help and anybody who's willing to help us with this. As I mentioned earlier, we're members of the homeless internal task force, and we'll continue that. It's a great group. There's a lot of crosstalk that happens in, in dealing with this issue. Do you have any questions?
Officer Riley, so staff-wise, how many people do you have if you're healthy helping you in this year?
How, how many people do we have in SOU right now?
Now that's, they're working towards this year.
So we have one sergeant, Sergeant Kelso, and two officers, one of which is out on an injury right now. Two, two special operations unit officers. And then, like I told you, with neighborhood response team, we have Sergeant Makings, he's the new sergeant that we just brought on this year, and then Officer Steppis who's out on injury regrettably, and then Officer Fisher, who's the new officer that we just brought on board.
So you're healthy, is everybody here ideally? Do you think you have the proper staff to continue making an impact like you do?
It's a work in progress, right, with staffing? And what's nice is, we have a team of people that are very interested in getting into these units. And so call it, call it, call it a minor league system, a bullpen in baseball terms. So we have a number of people that are very interested, and they want to make themselves a stronger candidate. a stronger candidate when we do open it up. It's a competitive process to get into these teams. And so, the more cooperative work that they can do and experience they can get with the units, it's better for them. So it's also better for us, because it's a win-win, really. So, they get professional development, we get the extra help, and it works out that way.
Okay. Just a quick comment. I know you work all day Friday, you work all day Sunday, all day Saturday. Have your boss given you any time off yet or not?
The chief, the chief tried to get me to take more time off, and I, I, yeah, I was able to adjust off yesterday, so.
Well, we do appreciate everything you do. We really do. So, well, that's it. I'm going to start off with Councilmember Fenter, please.
Thank you guys very much for the work that you do. I would like to see numbers, if you could get us some numbers. And with those numbers, I'd like to see, like, just how many contacts you make, and then, not necessarily how many take the services, if you have, I would like to know that, but also, how many are repeats? How many repeaters do you have? And are they repeats just once or twice? Do you see them every Tuesday and Thursday? The frequency.
I can let Sergeant Kelso talk a little bit about that.
So, I don't have numbers in front of me. For, for this ordinance in particular, we're talking just about public property, right? So we have, we have a lot of, of private property issues as well, they can, you know, private land, it's undeveloped where we have a lot of camps. Last time I checked, we were right around 120 different contacts. However, some of those are, the accounting on that is, is, is not easy to do, because, like CAO Fitzpatrick was saying, we'll go out multiple times, particularly to these large camps, right? So, how are we, how are we counting that? I might, I might talk to somebody five different times, but I'm only really counting that one time, because that's the one time that I fill out the 48-hour, here's your notice, you have to remove your, your property. So, so those numbers are, are elusive to, to, to track very, you know, you know, directly. And, we're not seeing a ton of repeat customers at different locations, right? So, we're seeing less of it than we were a year ago, for whatever reason. I'm not really sure what that is. I think it probably has something to do with this ordinance, and I, and I believe it's tied directly to the, we're seeing more people accepting resources and saying, yes, I will go into shelter, and I think it's a result of this. I think word is, is out there and, and they, they know, and, which is great, right? We're looking for compliance, right? So that's, that's what, what we're looking for. So we're seeing less repeat customers. Occasionally, we'll find somebody from one place to, to the next, but we're seeing less of that than we were a year ago. So I'll chalk that one up into the win column. And then, I'm sorry, I kind of, maybe, did I, did I fully answer your question?
Yes, and that's exactly what I'm looking for, that, not the five times that you visited them to see that they were preparing to move on, but from the time, I'd count that from the first of those five to the end of that five-day period, or whatever that timeframe is, when they move them, or saw that you had at, let's see, at-large filing or arrest. Then, have you had at-large filings or, or?
We've only actually done one. And, and so I think it's important to note that, prior to you guys passing the ordinance, we were, we're still doing the same job, right? And we were able to, to, to kind of do that with a lot of, just kind of verbal shifting around the issue, right? Now, in, in like Commander O'Reilly said, it provides clarity, right? So we can tell somebody, hey, here's what we need you to do. If you don't comply, this is the result. So it's, it's much clearer, much better for everybody involved. I'm, you know, personally, when I'm, when I'm dealing with folks on the street, I don't like to, to dance around issues and, and give obscure answers. I like, I like to provide people with, you know, good, clear information, and this allows us to do that, and I think that's why we're seeing some, some compliance on this, because we'll be able to, to give them, you know, here's, here's, here's your 48-hour notice, here's your resources. You know, if you, if we come back, you could be arrested for unlawful camping. So, it's much clearer.
And in the past, about a week and a half, two weeks, I've had two positive comments on your team, because the people are able to see the difference. One was going to complain, and by the time they got ready to complain, which was just a matter of a couple of days, they drove back by and everything was already clear. So they didn't even get a chance to complain about that one, and then, thank you very much on their behalf.
Hey, Councilmember McCord, follow by Thomas.
I think Councilmember Michelle had her hand up first. Okay.
Okay. If you want to yield to her, please.
She's fine with it, so I just wanted to.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, thank you so much for all the work that you do and your teams. My question actually was similar to Councilmember Fenter, so you already answered that. But the, I think the other piece that I kind of was looking for is, we, we had, we signed up with the contractor with Public Works for cleaning up sites. Would that be helpful in the future? Would that make your job easier for having more of those, or?
Absolutely, it would. And so, and I'll give an example. I know you guys kind of had quite a few citizens come to a meeting on the 2500 block of South The adjacent private property owner, so that, it was a, a large encampment, much of it was on that private property, much of it was on the city property, right, right, you know, right adjoining to it. So, we were able to, to kind of go in there, post our warnings, all that kind of stuff. Really, the holdup in that was waiting for those contracts to get signed and the cleanup crew to become available. Quite honestly, probably wouldn't have had that barrage of, of, of citizens coming had we had multiple cleanup crews on contract, ready to go, because we were just kind of waiting on that, that piece. So, yeah, that, that was, you know, that was, once, once the contracts were signed and that, that was, that contractor was able to go, we were able to move on that thing very quickly and, and get that thing cleaned up. So, yeah.
Okay. And, because I was just thinking about, like, the safety aspect for the contractors, so I'm assuming that you're working with them, at least?
We do. Yeah, so, the, the very short version of that is, we'll go out, we'll post, post the camp. If it's a large camp, they'll, they'll hire the contractor. When the, the contractor comes out, we'll go with them, escort them through the camp, and then, the day that they're doing the cleanup, we'll also go out with them. We usually go out 30 minutes to an hour early, make sure that nobody's still there. Oftentimes, there are, so we'll kind of get them, hey, you have to grab your belongings and get going, and then we'll stand by until, till everybody's kind of gone, and then the contractor can, can do his thing.
Councilmember Thomas.
I'll yield to Councilmember Michelle.
Man, Councilmember Michelle.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Better be good.
Commander O'Reilly and Sergeant Kelso, I just want to thank you guys for the work that you are doing, you and your teams. I went out with you yesterday. We visited two encampments in the span of like, two hours, and I know you were going to more in the afternoon, so you were very busy. What I witnessed was that the officers are very compassionate, professional, doing a really great job. We also had the FD Cares team with us yesterday. It just happened to be a firefighter and a social worker, and they were very nice and professional as well, and everyone was just treated very respectfully, and it was really, it was a good experience for me to see, and you guys are doing a really great job, and I'm really proud of you.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Appreciate that.
Good comment. Thanks for doing the ride along, that was cool. All righty. Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this may be a little bit of a negative note, perhaps, because I know you guys have been out there working hard, but I've had two comments this past week about people going through Renton and saying it's much better looking than Kent. And I said, oh, okay. So you've indirectly answered my question by, you know, your lack of people out there and some other things. Do you have, do you have a response to that at all? Would you say that's a?
I, I would say a lot of that is staffing-driven. You know, I would love to, it's my, my goal and Commander O'Reilly's goal, once we start getting staffed up, to, to go back to what we had when we were in the special operations unit with downtown bike patrols, being, the ability to be much more interactive and proactive, particularly down in the downtown core and in hotspots, right? So, you know, back in, in, in our, our era, we had better staffing, and we were able to, okay, we're having problems here with whatever the, the issue was, and being able to deploy bike officers out there and kind of, you know, put some, some effort into a particular problem. Right now, with just myself and, and the one officer, and we're having a hard time keeping up with just responding to the calls for service that, that get sent to us through the public, Public Works, Parks Department, other officers. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's primarily a manpower issue.
If I could follow up, please. So do you maintain, what's the right word, or observe the problems along the trail over here by shore?
Yeah, there are, there are absolutely, there are problems all along the length of the trail.
And they just move from one to another?
Sometimes.
Yeah.
Sometimes, and sometimes they, they just move along completely, so. But then, somebody else replaces them often.
Exactly. Thank you.
Hey, once, Pat, you want to hit something for me?
I just want to jump in here regarding Councilmember Thomas's comment. You can drive around areas of Kent where you won't see people in this condition, just like you can drive around areas of Renton where you won't see people in this, in this condition. So I think it's important to, to note that, depending on where you are, you might see this, and you might not. I think we all know Seattle is, in some places atrocious. I was there this weekend for my daughter's master's degree graduation, and I didn't see any indications of that by, in the downtown core area where I was. But I know, driving in, I saw cities of people. So I think it really depends on where you are. I think people tend to focus on the negative. It's kind of how human nature is lately. So, so I would challenge the assumption that Renton's better than Kent, or Kent's better than Auburn, et cetera. I think we're, this is a regional problem, everybody deals with it. It is the hot topic that we deal with in city manager association conversations, so it's just one perspective.
Plus the fact that we have a much larger area covered than Renton, for example.
Hey, once again, outstanding job, come out and ride with you and your team, and we as councilmen, we appreciate everything you guys are doing. We appreciate the report that you guys report out tonight, and, you know, keep doing what you're doing, and we got to take it one day at a time. And I guess, like Councilmember O'Meishaw, I mean, I like to go along and take a ride. I think we all should do that, right? Just to get a chance to really see what you guys up against. So I will take you up on that and schedule a ride along as well.
Absolutely. Open invitation.
Yes, sir. Go home, get some sleep, no matter, no matter what your boss say, okay? All right. Hey, all right, good job, guys. We're going to move on to Public Works Show. Councilmember Fenter, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Council President. We are going to have Cheryl Wilcox come up and talk to us about a condemnation order up on Reef Road for the Roundabout Project.
Well, those are going to be some hard presentations to follow. This isn't quite as exciting or interesting, but it is to us. I'm here to talk about the Reef Road Roundabout. The city requires acquisition of property rights from three property owners to construct the Roundabout. By the way, I learned a little while back that a roundabout is sometimes called a roundy-round in Hawaii. The project will convert the existing stop sign, let me move this down here. Okay, so this is the area, you can see the little dots in there, where, which is the area where it is on Reef Road, and I'm just going to go a little bit further into this. The project is going to convert the existing stop sign-controlled intersections at Reef Road and South 253rd Street and at Reef Road and Lake Fenwick to compact roundabouts. The project will help reduce vehicle speeds, reduce crash frequency and severity, and will improve the pedestrian crossings at the intersections. Right-of-way staff has been working with impacted property owners, and along with the project engineers, we've met on-site with the property owners or their representatives to explain the project and the city's property needs. We're not acquiring any entire properties. These are very small slivers of property we need to construct the Roundabout. Litigation condemnation proceedings would be the last resort, and the city is making every reasonable effort to avoid litigation. If negotiations fail, though, condemnation proceedings may become necessary to maintain the project schedule. Having this condemnation ordinance in place at this time will reduce the time required to file condemnation proceedings later if it becomes necessary. The property owners affected, they've received written notice of this ordinance, and a notice was published in The Camp Reporter and in The Seattle Times as well. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. No questions? In that case, if there are no questions, you guys are easy. If there are no questions, we're ready for a motion. So I move to adopt ordinance number 4471, authorizing the condemnation of property rights necessary to construct the Reef Road Roundabout Project. It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I'll just reiterate that this is not to take on a tire piece of property, this is basically strips of land that we're talking about, and there are negotiations going, ongoing. If there's nothing else, then we are ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Beautiful job. Now we are on to Suzanne Smith, who is going to talk to us about the 76th Avenue Mill Creek Culvert Replacement Project.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Thank you so much for your time, and I'm here, as she said, to present to you, actually, this presentation is for two motion items, items I and J, and these are for the Mill Creek and 76th Avenue South Flood Protection Improvements Project. This project is also known as the 76th Avenue South Mill Creek Culvert Replacement Project. So this project is in an urbanized reach of Mill Creek adjacent to 76th Avenue South. The project includes floodplain stabilization and habitat improvements to Mill Creek at 76th Avenue by replacing culverts with bridges to improve fish passage, improving stream geometry, restoring habitat using native vegetation, and improving floodplain areas to reduce flood risk. This project will serve as a benefit to the public by stabilizing the area to protect against flooding and improving the surrounding habitat. This project has been awarded three grants already, two from the Washington State Department of Commerce, one for $1,950,000, and the other for $980,000. Last month, David Payne presented a grant from the Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board for $5 million. Item I on the agenda is a consultant services agreement with OTAC Incorporated for structural, storm, and stream construction support. This is, this contract will likely be necessary for at least two years or more to get us through the construction of the project. Item J on the agenda is accepting a grant, another grant, from the King County Flood Control District Subregional Opportunity Fund Acceptance Fund, and that amount is $205,902. So the King County Flood Control District collects an annual levy from properties within King County. Through the district's Subregional Opportunity Fund, 10% of the levy collected within each jurisdiction is granted back to the jurisdiction to be used for storm water or habitat projects with a flood-related nexus. In 2022, the city of Kent was allocated this grant amount of $205,902 for the 76th Avenue South Mill Creek Culvert Replacement Project, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions?
I mean?
Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Fenter. Hi Suzanne, how are you doing?
Hi, great. How about yourself?
On this picture that you've shown, I do see now you've got December of 2019, but since then, haven't we raised 76?
So we've currently constructed the middle and the north phase of this. This is like a three, has been a three-phase project, so I'm sure you've probably heard lots, seen lots of presentations for this project previously. So the middle phage, phase, which is very near and along the frontage of Blue Origins Headquarters.
Right.
That we raised in 2020 and 2021. We're just wrapping up the second phase, which is on the north end up by 212th Street.
Okay.
That, we're pretty much done with that construction. We're just wrapping up a few items on that construction. So those have all been raised above the So those have all been raised above the flood level, and then this is the la, we believe this will be the last phase of this, of this project where we're actually doing the bridge work, so we'll be building three bridges.
Should help, huh?
Yeah.
Good. And you're using concrete now too, aren't you?
Correct. The road will be concrete.
Okay. Good for trucks. Thank you.
Sorry, this one is down close to Republic Services?
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Just to give you an idea of where it is. Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll take J first, or rather, take I first. I move to accept grant funds from the King County Flood Control District Subregional Opportunity Fund in the amount of $205,902 for the 76th Avenue South Mill Creek Culvert Replacement Project. Amend the budget and authorize expenditures of the funds in accordance with the grant terms and conditions. That was actually J.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, and this is on again. J, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now for I. I move to authorize the mayor to sign a consultant services agreement with OTAC Inc. in the amount not to exceed $249,906, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, both motions passed unanimously, so we will be getting some work done over on 76th Avenue South on that Mill Creek Culvert Project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to have Jason Berry come up and talk to us about consultant services agreement with KBA Inc. for the 108th Street, uh, or 108th Avenue Southeast and Southeast 264th Street Compact Roundabouts.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, my name's Jason Berry. I'm the Capital Project Supervisor in Public Works Engineering. Our, our 108th Avenue Southeast and Southeast 264th Street Compact Roundabout will replace the current stop sign controlled T intersection with a new compact roundabout. As a part of the construction, new concrete curb, storm drainage, concrete retaining wall, sidewalk, driveways, asphalt pavement, striping, and illumination will be built. This project is funded by a grant from the Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program. Along with this federal grant comes very stringent contract documentation and administrative requirements, and the potential for federal project management review audits. As a result of the stringent requirements and audit risk, we have found it valuable in the past to contract with consultants that specialize in the administration of construction projects with federal funds. This allows our city staff to manage multiple projects concurrently that are not so administratively challenging, while the consultants focus on making sure everything is complete with the federal project. Uh, this afternoon, I am seeking the committee's authorization for a consultant services agreement with KBA Incorporated. KBA specializes in providing construction management services for local municipalities on federally funded projects throughout the region. Uh, with the authorization, KBA will provide construction management, contract administration, field inspection, and quality control through a subconsultant. Thank you. Uh, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Ever since this was proposed, I just keep wondering if you'd moved one more block south, you'd be right on the Home Depot Road as opposed to this block, which I think doesn't have as much traffic. I may be wrong, but Home Depot is just one more block, and it would have been so easy to put, I don't know, easy probably is not the right word, but...
Yeah. It's not easy to put a circle in there. But, uh, yeah, this, 108th is a big commuter route.
Oh, yeah.
On PM peaks, getting over to 277th, and so I, I don't know a lot of history on the location determination.
Oh, here we go.
We can help you out. Rob does.
Afternoon, councilmembers. Rob Brown, Transportation Engineering Manager. Uh, as Jason mentioned, this was funded by, uh, Highway Safety Improvement Program grant, and the way those work is we submit a list of projects to the Washington State Department of Transportation after we've done a safety analysis through our local road safety plan, and then they go through those and they select the projects they're going to fund out of that list. And this specific location actually had a couple of serious crashes, and so it rose pretty high on the list, actually higher than 104th and 264th. So we will keep applying for those grants to try and get that intersection done as well, but this one actually ranked higher.
Okay. Just see what's odd.
Anything else? This is a lot of the other funds, or, uh, motions that we have tonight. There's a lot of grant funding involved, so thank you, guys. Uh, if there are no other questions, comments, I am going to move to authorize the mayor to sign the consultant services agreement with KBA Inc. in the amount of $252,845, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the public works director and the city attorney.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It has, oh, all opposed?
Not opposed. I choose abstain since I missed the presentation.
So one abstention. Uh, we will be getting some work done with KBA on that round, compact roundabout. Thank you very much. Uh, so now we have, that is not Drew.
You are correct.
That's going to be Drew.
Um, yeah, Derek Hawkes, uh, with Public Works, uh, Design, uh, Section, uh, Drew is unable to come today, so I'm just filling in for him, and also have Eric Preston with our transportation team, who's the, uh, engineer on this project. So, um, basically, a quick presentation, um, we're here to ask for acceptance of additional grant funds of just under a half million dollars, so, um, yeah, I'm happy to bring some additional funds to the project. As you recall, this is for the road diet project, um, where we will re-stripe existing roadways to three lanes plus bike lanes at three locations. Um, those locations are, see on the map here, um, basically 260th and 259th over, uh, from 99 to Military Road. We also have, uh, Fourth Avenue, uh, North, um, up from 228th down to James, and then from, oh, I'm sorry. Go back here. And then on, uh, Smith, um, and Meeker, uh, from Washington Avenue to Fourth also. So three sections, all little different profiles, but we are changing those to essentially to the, to the three lanes with the bike lanes. To go through some of these locations, just, um, burn through this pretty quick, but yeah, here's 2, 260th, two wide lanes, and we're going to, yeah, the, the center turn lane, uh, two lanes and bike lanes. And then these, this is a profile for Meeker, um, at the top, uh, two lanes east direction, um, and then, uh, two lanes with center turn lane and those transitions, so, um... Yeah, so in March of 2021, City Council authorized the acceptance of $735,000 in grant funds with a 10% local match to the project. Uh, designer the last two years, construction costs have escalated due to inflation, uh, other factors, um, and also this being kind of a newer type of project for us. Uh, WashDOT offered us additional grant funding of just under a half million dollars to cover the increased costs, uh, due to this inflation, uh, because we were construction ready. So we're ready, uh, we're in the process of trying to get approval of that, to advertise, and because of that, they're making up that difference. Uh, also with that, the local match of 10% is no longer required, so this is all, all grant funded, um, provided that we all get the project by, uh, 2026, and we're anticipating advertising it soon and being under construction this summer, uh, and into, into next year. Um, again, no budget impact. In fact, we're actually reducing the impact to the budget, so, uh, yeah, happy to answer any questions that, uh, council may have.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. So, a quick story. When they built I-5, my dad looked at the map that they were doing, and here he's talking about going from four lanes in Seattle down to two lanes. He says, "That's not going to work." And it hasn't worked for 50 years. I've been, the traffic down there snarls together, and now you're proposing to go from four lanes, four cars, down to two cars. I don't get it.
Yeah, so on, on 260th, it would be four lanes, um, actually, I'm sorry, that's, uh, that's Meeker. Um, yeah, Meeker, four lanes to two lanes with a center turn lane, which also has some benefits of center turn lane and bike lanes. So it's trying to use existing infrastructure, the curb gutter and sidewalk, leaving those in place, and just using striping to essentially get the bike lanes. And this is in our transportation, uh, master plan. I don't know if Eric wants to...
Uh-oh.
I think you should also.
Hi, Eric's here.
It's okay. No, um, the traffic volumes out there are such that we don't need all those lanes, and so we can still move the same volume with fewer lanes, and still with the center turn lane, you get the left turns out of the way. So we can still achieve the capacity, but improve safety as well.
Sure.
The, the whole point of this project was safety.
But 1962, you come down to two lanes there in Seattle, no problem then. You move ahead to 2022 or 23, it's a major problem. So, yeah, it's fine for now, your proposal here, but I'm very concerned with the growing population and everything else that's going on. I, I, I'm sorry, I just have a problem here, and I'll probably be voting no. Sorry.
Okay. Do you have, is there something you want me to address specifically about, about the volumes in the future? Is that...
I just wouldn't, I wouldn't change it, so...
But it's basically some facts and data, right? So they're looking at the data, that's what the data is telling us, right? So, I mean...
And the data in 1962 said, "Yeah, two lanes is going to work when you put four lanes from south to two lanes going through Seattle." Sorry, guys, I just don't see it.
One of the points that I add, since this is over in my neighborhood, is that my hope is that this is also going to slow some of the traffic down. There is a lot of fast movement there. There's a crosswalk, which I still think needs a flashing, one of the, uh, rectangle flashing lights, but, uh, it's going to add additional safety for those who are on bicycles, and at the same time, additional safety for the pedestrians who are in the area. We get, uh, cars traveling at, at high speeds that are quite dangerous, and there's some curves there. There's also a number of apartments in the area.
I think Councilmember McCord may have a question.
Oh, councilmember?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chair. I actually don't have a question, just to comment. I think it's based on data and also, uh, hopeful that in future we'll have better public transportation, and utilization of that public transportation will not, we won't be needing four lanes. So I think, uh, I think that's where, just to kind of comment on, on Councilmember Thomas here, so, thank you.
And with that data, it's not only our Kent data, it's also the national highway standards that we are, uh, looking at and following.
Absolutely. This is from the Federal Highway Administration. This road diets are a proven countermeasure to reduce, uh, crashes by quite a bit. Yeah, and the, our future traffic projections don't have a ton of growth, and they should be, uh, accommodated by this.
Okay. If I may?
Yes. Oh, you know what? Go right ahead, and then we're going to get to Councilmember Michelle.
Sorry this time. So, alternative methods of transportation, in this area, you're talking buses. Trains don't come by here. Uh, we don't have the high, you know, until you get up to the Highway 99, you're not going to get much fast traffic. So now you've got these big buses that are loaded down with people, and now you've gone from these four lanes down to two lanes, and one of those lanes has got big buses on it. I just, I just don't see the practicality here. I'm sorry. And I probably have talked too much.
That's what I'm talking about. I just hope you around here in 50 years, you can say, "Hey, it really worked, you know? It really worked."
And this area is very close to Pac Highway, where we have the train that's, uh, the sound transit project that's coming in. Councilmember Michelle?
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Um, my first question is for Councilmember Thomas. I'm wondering which one you're most concerned about, which, which of these, because there's three different roads here we're talking about. Okay. And then it looks like most of this is just like lane striping, isn't it? So it could be reversed in 50 years. Easily. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? In that case, I move to accept additional grant funds from the Washington State Department of Transportation in the amount of $499,140 for the City Safety Road Diets Project, and authorize the expenditure of these grant funds ratified all past actions consistent with this motion, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now you have, uh, coming up, we have Eric Preston, who's going to talk to us about more road safety.
Yes, yes, indeed. Hello, councilmembers. I'm Eric Preston, your city traffic engineer, and I'm here to talk about our local road safety plan, and introduce the safe system approach as we undertake the effort to complete our Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan. Um, the local road safety plan, just a quick review, is a data-driven analysis that looks at crash history over the previous five years. Uh, both the 2020 and 2022 plans were very successful in receiving grant funding from Highway Safety Improvement Program, WashDOT's Ped and Bike Program, uh, Transportation Improvement Board, Puget Sound Regional Council, and other grant programs, and the roundabouts you've seen tonight are all part of those. Um, it focuses on preventing serious and fatal crashes through spot and systemic improvements. The Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan is the next evolution of the local road safety plan, and it enables us to compete for implementation funding. So read in there millions and millions of dollars available to us when we get this done. So, uh, the safe system approach is a very complex topic, but this is going to be an overview tonight. So the top three things I want you to take away are the safe system approach is principles-based. Um, achieving a safe system requires all five elements to be strengthened, and I'll get into those in detail, and safe roads is a continuum, not an absolute. So first, by way of introduction, um, nationally, unfortunately, thousands of lives are lost each year on our nation's roads. Uh, you can see there were more than 38,000 deaths in 2020, and in 2021, the trend continued upwards with over 42,000, and sadly, preliminary estimates for 2022 are similar. Uh, when you look closer at crashes for people walking and biking, which are the red and green dash lines at the top, we see that they have been increasing at a higher rate than other crash types. So to stem the tide and achieve more positive and equitable outcomes requires a fundamental change, so it needs something else. It involves a paradigm shift to improve safety culture, increase collaboration across all safety stakeholders, and refocus transportation system design and operation on anticipating human mistakes and lessening impact forces to reduce crash severity and save lives. In this new paradigm, um, the safe system approach aims to eliminate fatal and serious injuries for all road users by accommodating human mistakes and keeping impacts on the human body at tolerable levels. The safe system approach is not a new concept. It has existed for over 30 years in countries across the globe. Um, adopters of the safe system approach shown on the slide have been, have seen market in, uh, decreases in traffic fatalities across their roadway systems, with many achieving much greater reductions in traffic fatalities than the U.S. over the previous 20 years. While the safe system approach is newer in the U.S., efforts are underway to implement it more fully into our safety programs, including, uh, through Target Zero here in our own Washington State. So this graphic, um, really summarizes the safe systems approach. Uh, there are three key components to understand. First, the approach, principles, and the elements. The safe system approach is the broadest term and describes everything that you see here. Uh, the six safe system principles are shown in the white border around the outside. Um, they are the fundamental beliefs, if you will, um, that the approach is built on. So these, reading, uh, starting at the top, are death and serious injuries unacceptable. Going to the right, number two, humans make mistakes. Number three, humans are vulnerable. Number four, responsibility is shared. Number five, safety is proactive. And six, redundancy is crucial. On the inside, the safe, five, excuse me, safe system elements are highlighted in blue. Those are, starting in the upper left, safe road users, and going to the right, two safe vehicles. Safe speeds, safe roads, and post-crash care. So now we'll jump into detail on the outer ring, which is the six principles. Number one, death and serious injury is unacceptable. While no crashes are desirable, the safe system approach prioritizes crashes that result in death and serious injuries, since no one should experience either when using the road road. in death and serious injuries, since no one should experience either when using the roadway system. The goal is to reduce not only the likelihood of crashes happening at all, but to reduce their severity when they do happen. Number two, humans make mistakes. People will inevitably make mistakes that can lead to crashes, but we can design and operate the roadway system to accommodate human mistakes to avoid serious injury and death. Number three, humans are vulnerable. It's basic physics. People have a limited ability to tolerate crash impacts, which is central to the safe system approach. Number four, responsibility is shared. System managers, vehicle manufacturers, law enforcement, post-crash personnel, and system users all have a responsibility to promote safe behavior and ensure that crashes don't lead to fatal or serious injuries. Number five, safety is proactive. In addition to crash-based analysis, transportation agencies should use proactive tools to identify and mitigate latent risks in the roadway system, rather than waiting for crashes to occur and reacting afterwards. This process, known as the systemic approach to safety, uses crash history, roadway design, and other data to identify patterns in geometric design that lead to certain crash types. As a side note, the systemic approach to safety has already begun with the Local Road Safety Plan that we do every two years. Number six, redundancy is crucial. Reducing risks requires that all parts of the roadway system are strengthened, so that if one part fails, people are still protected. This is the last of the principles, and so I'll jump into the five system elements. And again, these elements are conduits through which that, those safe system approach must be implemented. So here's the first. Safe road users. The safe system approach addresses the safety of all. All road users are considered equal regardless of how they choose to travel. Each has a responsibility to operate within the boundaries set by system managers. Education and enforcement can help to modulate user behavior. But we all make mistakes. So it's our responsibility to not be distracted or impaired to comply with the rules of the road and to ensure that we act within the limits of the road's design. System managers and law enforcement can use techniques like traffic or DUI enforcement, speed feedback signs, and education campaigns to promote compliance with the rules. Next is element number two, safe vehicles, which include active safety measures, like helping prevent crashes from occurring, such as autonomous emergency braking. Some of your newer cars have that, as well as passive safety measures that we are used to, like seat belts and airbags. Safe vehicles must account for safety of other road users as well through elements such as size, design, materials, things like bicycle and pedestrian detection. Unconnected and automated vehicles will be necessary to ensure vehicle safety for all road users in the future. Element number three is safe speeds. So there is a direct linkage between safe speeds and our ability to survive a crash. And it comes down to kinetic energy. I'm not gonna talk about that now, because it's a very complex subject. But simply put, humans are unlikely to survive high-speed crashes. As you see on the graphic, they can reduce pedestrian fatalities. Over on the left, nine out of 10 pedestrians are likely to survive if hit by a vehicle traveling around 20 miles per hour, while only one in 10 pedestrians will likely survive an impact at around 60 miles per hour. Element number four, safe roads are designed and operated to prevent crashes and keep impacts on the human body at tolerable levels. Avoiding crashes involves three things. One, separating users in space. By separating users and vehicles with different mass, moving at different speeds, or in different directions. For instance, bikes get their own bike lane. Walkers get a sidewalk. Left turns get their own left turn lane. You could also separate users in time. At some point, users will need to occupy the same physical space on the roadway, like at an intersection. But by separating users in time, we can reduce vehicle interactions with the vulnerable road users. So pedestrians get their own phase. Left turns get their own phase in time. You can also increase attentiveness and awareness with things like daylighting intersections to allow greater visibility, add street lighting, add rumble strips, and rectangular rapid flashing beacons to warn about crossing pedestrians. Crashes do occur. We need to manage crash kinetic energy to within human tolerance, and that involves managing speeds with context-sensitive speed limits, managing crash angles with road designs that eliminate right-angle crashes like roundabouts, managing crash energy distribution by using roadside barriers to provide less severe impacts and reduce the force experienced by occupants. The final element is post-crash care, and this is one of the last lines of defense when all other elements fail. First responders must be able to quickly access a crash site, establish communications, set up traffic control, and then reopen the roadway to traffic as safety, safely and quickly as possible to help avoid secondary crashes. Quick response and investigation by police and road managers can help ensure crash factors are documented and reported correctly. Emergency medical care by first responders to quickly locate, treat, and stabilize the injured and transport them to medical facilities. So this is my last slide. The five safe system elements create redundancy. And I love this slide because it really kind of brings it all together. The Swiss cheese model you see here helps us demonstrate this redundancy. On the left, we see how the five safe system elements work together, such that if one or more parts fail, there are redundant systems in place. Layered safety measures are represented as slices of Swiss cheese, with the holes being weaknesses in individual parts of the system. When they act as successive layers of defense and the holes are not lined up, a person is protected. On the right, this shows how a failure only results when a hole in each slice momentarily aligns, permitting a hazard to pass through holes in all the slices. The basic principle is that lapses and weaknesses in one part of the system can occur, but other parts compensate to not allow a failure. This relates back to the safe system principles that redundancy is crucial and responsibility is shared. So zero is our goal, and a safe system is how we get there. I am available for questions.
Questions or comments?
Just the comments. I've seen a lot of presentation, but nothing like Swiss cheese. Very interesting.
You're hungry.
Councilmember Laramore?
Yeah, so question, can you just fill me in again? So we're in the phase where we are putting together this program that will then allow us to get grant funding.
Yes.
Okay. And so what is our projected completion and when would we potentially be able to start looking at grants?
It'll be next year, somewhere in that March to May timeframe. We're not sure when that next call will come out.
Okay.
Next call for projects.
Because I think there's a lot in here that would apply to, you know, we've obviously had some crashes recent, some pedestrian involved.
Yeah.
Incidents recently, so.
We will need your help along the way, because there will be elements when you will be very, very involved.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. And now, David Payne is going to come up and give us some information on the Transportation Improvement Board grants.
Mr. President, councilmembers, just one slide, separating you from the, the end of the session today. Thank you. All good topics, all good information, so not to take away from any of that at all. We have one small information item to update. That is, on August 11th, we will be submitting two grant applications to the Transportation Improvement Board. The first, to continue the city's successful competition for, for grants, each year the TIB has a grant call. So we'll be putting in an application for two projects. The first is in our urban active transportation program. That's a host of six different locations, shown by the green arrows and the orange dots, for RRFB enhancements at existing crossing locations. So these are for crossing locations of roadways with two lanes, where we can, with staff forces, leveraging staff forces, install RRFBs at crosswalks. So that's two locations on Military Road from the Local Road Safety Plan and Transportation Master Plan. That's at southeast 268th and 248th. Two locations on 116th Avenue, southeast, that's approximately near southeast 223rd and to, southeast 234th Street. And then also on 132nd Avenue, southeast, near southeast 278th and southeast 234th Street. So with a successful application, we could get those in approximately a year. And we hope that, to, to leverage a, a new opportunity with a TIB to, to do so. Typically, they're, they're design, construct, design, bid, construct projects, but this one would be done with, if successful, would be done with city forces. The second is for leveraging project readiness. You, you heard from Suzanne's project earlier, or presentation earlier, on 76th Avenue South. This is a very sizable project, and so reading between the lines of the Transportation Improvement Board criteria, we think that, that this would be a good project for their urban arterial program this year. So we wanted to make sure that council was aware of these applications, and hopefully, with luck, we will be successful. Any questions I can answer for council?
Questions? Councilmember Michelle?
Thank you, Councilmember Fenture. I just saw a comment. Having grown up near 116th and now living on 132nd, I think those are much-needed and good locations for those beacons. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Council President?
Well, thank you. Good job, Councilmember Fenture. And just a lot of information, a lot of good information from public works. So thanks to Chad and your team. I appreciate that. Hey, we have a workshop coming up. You guys want to take a five-minute break? Okay, five-minute break, and then we'll get started, okay? Thank you. Hey, James Endicott.[1276.74] Okay, we are back here. We're ready to start our workshop. We've got two items. One is the update from IT on their plan. They've been doing a good job of keeping those updated. And then we're going to do a sound transit federalway link extension. So, Mike Carrington, IT Director, all yours, sir.
Awesome. Thank you, Council President Weiss. Councilmembers, good afternoon. Madam Mayor, good to be with you. We are going to go through a presentation that builds on the last information technology update that we gave you back in February of this year. I've got my, most of my management team here with me to be able to fill in gaps and to answer questions as we go along. We're going to be kind of hopscotching between our chairs and the podium. But again, that's mostly in an effort to try and make sure that we accurately answer your questions and fill in the gaps that aren't necessarily ones that are done through the presentation for you. So I want to encourage you to ask questions along the way, please. These accomplishments are going to be part of the presentation. We're also going to talk about our work plan and our technology roadmap, especially as they, items pertain to the difference between the February presentation and today. So we've got some things that include cybersecurity that we'll be having James Endicott go through that will give you a feel for some of the bigger programs or initiatives that we have going. Just a quick reminder that IT has two sides to the shop. We've got our operations and then we've got our projects. Operations is priority number one for us, maintaining and operating existing business systems and platforms, keeping those running. We like to affectionately refer to it as keeping the technology lights on is priority number one for us. Then and only then do we look to allocate resources towards various projects that we have, that we tend to partner real closely with most, if not all, the departments on. IT has its fair share of IT-specific projects also. Those are typically new system and platform deployments, major system upgrades, core critical system integrations, stabilization projects, things of that nature. Tara Duckworth, the IT Deputy Director is out on vacation. She's primarily responsible for most of IT operations. I'm going to talk a little bit about operations and share with you some of the metrics, a couple of slides on some of the metrics that we've been capturing. But at the risk of stealing all her thunder, I'm going to push the depth and breadth of the operations report out to her at our next meeting with you folks. Let's see, so a taste of what's to come from Tara and the IT Operations Group. We get into a slide that revolves around service requests and metrics associated with that. The year begins in 2020. That includes tickets open and tickets closed. You can see in the contrasting bars. Subsequent years then pull us to a 2023 year-to-date count. And you can see that we're on pace to match 2022's numbers when you look at the 2023 count. Again, that's tickets opened and tickets closed. We'll be getting into some of the nuances around these also when Tara gives that presentation. Next slide takes us to representing customer survey metrics. We've been sending those out to customers, keeping our fingers crossed that the hard work that we're doing is going to be reflected in the responses that we get from those folks. And actually, for us, it's something that we see as a really important activity that's been super healthy and constructive for us. You can see that those metrics start off in 2020. We had about 450 responses in that calendar year, which equated to an average score of about 3.8 on a scale of from zero to five. You can see we get into subsequent years and then year-to-date for 2023. We're roughly at about 250 responses that we've received. And you see, we're averaging a 4.6, 4.7 if we're going to round up. I like to round up when I'm talking with staff on this. So again, it's something we're really proud of, really looking forward to Tara taking you through the nuances associated with these metrics and the work that's been done that is a backdrop and I think a reflection of the fact that that average has gone up. Okay? So that's a brief glimpse into IT operations. Again, more to come in the future on that. We're going to move on to the technology roadmap review with Brian.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Brian Rambunga, IT PMO Manager. Like Mike said, I will be introducing our technology roadmap for this evening's presentation. This first slide that we'll be going over is a list of all of IT's major initiatives over the next five to 10 years. You also have a handout that I see some of you are looking at already. This list remains relatively unchanged from our last presentation in February, but we do want to highlight through this presentation and with a couple of slides, a few of the new programs with subsequent projects that we'll be talking about later on in the presentation. And we'll be touching on those three programs at a high level. One of them is security-related. James will be presenting on that, which is our Zero Trust Architecture Program. The other, the other two, one of is our Facility Security Technology Program that we're collaborating on with our Parks Department. And the other is our Enterprise Data Records Evidence Lifecycle Program, which talks about data records and evidence for the city. But before we go into introduction and brief overview of those new programs, we definitely wanted to take the opportunity to shout out to a couple of recently completed initiatives since our February 2023 update. One of them, like I had mentioned, with our Parks Department was the deployment and/or the upgrade of Golf Now, which is our tea time reservation system. And it really just improved the functionality and security around point-of-sale for that tea time reservation system. The other two are in our application development space. So within the Tax Division within Finance, we did get through Business and Operating Enhancements for 2023. This next-gen of working papers includes enhancements to the accountability and functionality, such as electronic review and approval of assessments, refunds, penalty waivers, and payment agreements. Another accomplishment in our App Dev space is our Server Re-Architecture, where we upgraded the integration and DevOps environments to the most latest and recent version of our Microsoft Server Operating Systems for security and performance. So the first program that we wanted to touch on and give a high-level overview is the Facility Security Technology Program. And the objective of this program with the projects that you kind of see in Gantt Bar format over a timeline that results in a couple of biennium, all the way out till 2028 potentially and beyond, these are again, high-level kind of estimates for this program. But this really touches on replacing and upgrading the security cameras and the access control for the facilities here at the City of Kent. The first two initiatives that we're working on with Parks Facilities is the camera system over at the Corrections Facility, as well as the camera and access control system over at Public Workshops. And again, throughout 2024, anytime after 2023, they're very high-level estimates, but the projects identify as locations that we're looking to deploy for the different locations around the city. And those include remote sites, Station 74, City Hall Campus, of course, Senior Center, Commons and Golf, the PD substations. You'll also see Keyhawk on there, as well as other remote sites that we have here at the city. Okay? So that's the Facility Security Technology Program. Next one that we wanted to talk about is the Enterprise Data Records and Evidence Lifecycle Program. And the overall scope and objective of this program is related to data security, enterprise backup, and records management and administration as it relates to archiving and retention of city data, records, and evidence. So the first project, which is already underway, that James is leading with his team in the Infrastructure and Security Operations Center, is the replacement of the city's data security and backup solution, which is CommVault. Shortly after that, we look to work with Kim and her team at the City Clerk's Office to implement the Washington State Core for our current records management solution, which is LaserFISH. And what the Washington State Core will bring is an automated package of retention schedules that we could potentially reply, apply to city records within a system, and that system being LaserFISH. After that, we look to deploy the email and archive, email and file archive and retention process and automation within LaserFISH. Shortly after that, probably over a three- to four-year period, the business system integrations, we're, us in IT, as well as within the City Clerk, we've already received a couple of requests kind of outlining the integrations for existing business systems like City Works for Public Works, RecTrack for Parks, Amanda for ECD to integrate and get those records that are in those existing business systems into LaserFISH so that we could apply archive and retention schedules to the records that are produced out of those business systems. And then hopefully after that, or at least concurrently to the work that we're going to be doing for business systems integrations, we did want to list a workflow because that's when we'll really start to dive into the power of LaserFISH because it is a business process automation solution at heart. But a workflow that we look and hope to tackle within LaserFISH revolves around procurement and contract approval. Okay? So with that, I think I'll turn over the overview of this next program, Zero Trust, to James.
Good evening, again, James Endicott, Infrastructure and Security Operations Manager. So I want to take a moment and kind of introduce our new Zero Trust Program that we're deploying, we've been working on for the last couple of years, and we still got a number of years ahead of us. And so I really kind of want to dive into, you know, what is Zero Trust? And from our side, it is literally what it sounds like. We don't trust anything. So moving forward, we move into a world of, you must be granted explicit permission to access the network. We say that, that is users, computers, servers, software, right? So it changes how we do business. Why do we implement this type of solution, right, or this type of approach? And really what it comes down to, in order for me to answer that question first, I have to tell you guys a traditional security model. Traditional security model, think of it as a castle and a moat, right? We kind of put a moat up, we put a castle in the middle, and then we expect that perimeter, that moat, so to speak, to protect us. Well, as we all see in movies and shows, as soon as somebody gets across that moat and they're inside the castle, it's pretty much the Wild West. You can pretty much do whatever you want. So we're trying to get away from that. And with the traditional security model, it is implicit trust. Once you have access, for the most part, you can pretty much laterally move anywhere in our network, right? So if you think from a threat actor standpoint, they get into our network, they have unabated lateral access. And what that means is they can sit there and do what's called lay of the land reconnaissance. They just sit there and they watch. What is everybody doing? What servers are they going to? What applications they have? So then what they can do is they can take all that information and say, oh, the City of Kent has an old type of server. They have these services running. And then they can start to develop a plan. On average, when you look at very large breaches, excuse me, threat actors have been in your system for upwards of nine months. So taking that information away is really, really important. So that's traditional security model. So when you look at Zero Trust, it kind of is almost everything opposite of that, right? It's not a single thing that we do, right? We don't just turn on Zero Trust. It is a series of efforts, hardware, software approaches, what we like to refer to as PSPGs. But the number one thing that we get from Zero Trust is reducing our risk, right? That is what our jobs are, is to reduce our risk of security incidents. And so we do that by giving that, what I mentioned earlier, that explicit permission to move, to access our network. The other piece of it, it sounds kind of brutal, but we also implement Zero Trust because it limits your blast radius. So the day that we are compromised, right, we always say, it's not if, it's just when. We want to limit, what is that blast radius, right? If a person gets in, how can we limit the true damage they can do? So want to keep it kind of small and contained. A couple of the other reasons why we want to look at doing Zero Trust is it meets compliance. It either meets compliance today, or it sets us up to meet compliance in the future. So PCI, CGS, HIPAA, all the alphabet soup of compliance that we have to adhere to. It's either putting us in a position where we're going to be ahead of the compliance curve, and so when it hits us, we're already there, or it's coming very, very shortly. CGS is a great example. CGS is Criminal Justice Information Systems. It's what kind of the FBI throws out to manage the police department and their technology. They're going through a major, major revamp of their policies. And so I would call it a modernization of their technology. And so a lot of these things that are coming down the pipe really kind of fit into a Zero Trust approach. The last one that I would say is of a big interest is it is kind of has that increased ROI, right? And what I mean by that is if we can implement Zero Trust, we reduce our overall risk, which reduce our incidents, which reduces our support, it reduces our cybersecurity liability insurance. So there's a whole bunch of benefits of implementing Zero Trust. So where do we implement Zero Trust, right? And it is a holistic approach, right? Brian, you can go ahead and flip that. Yep. So if you look at, and everybody has that drawing, we created this drawing to give you a concept of, it's a foundational thing, right? If any one of those pillars come out, it may still work, but it comes a weekend, right? So like I was mentioning, it's not a single kind of approach. It is across multiple, what we call pillars. In those five pillars, the first one really is identity. And it's like, you are who you say you are, and you can validate that, right? The second one is device, which allows only authorized devices, right? So if somebody brings their own personal laptop, iPad, iPhone, they cannot touch city resources. Next one is network, right? It's really securing our network and stopping lateral movement to reduce that lay of the land or that reconnaissance, so to speak. The next pillar is application, and that is a principle of least privilege. And then what that ultimately means is you only need access to what you need access to. You do not get full access, right? You only need the permissions to do your job, nothing more, right? And then the final pillar of this is data. And this is really protecting our data, right? When it's at rest, it's encrypted. When it's in motion, it's encrypted. We can track when sensitive data leaves our network, when sensitive data comes into our network. So having those types of controls in place. So when do we do Zero Trust? Well, as I mentioned earlier, we've been working on it for a while. Because it is not, like I say, a single thing we do, it is a multi-year, multi-budget process, we've been working on it since 2021 already. And that is everything from implementing some of these solutions, but also the majority of the work has been in the planning, right? It's us been building, what does Zero Trust truly mean? Because I think everybody hears it as a buzzword. How does it impact us as a city? How does it impact our customers that we support, kind of a thing? Let's see. Kind of the final thing about when we do this is I also want, as I had mentioned, it's not one thing that we do, but in the spirit of continuous improvement and adapting to the threat landscape, we will never finish this, right? It is a concept that we will always have a plan, that we keep updating as the time, as years go by, as technology advances, as threat advances, we are always updating this. So I just want that to be understood, that this is always going to be a constant thing that we're working on. That's why we've made it a program. And then kind of finally, how do we do this? Number one thing that I can express to you of how we do this is executive support, okay? That is probably, when you look at Zero Trust Architecture and Implementation, the number one thing that can make this successful, that will make it successful, is executive sponsor, you know, buy-in and support. Because you guys help, executive leadership helped create a really strong security culture, right? It also is a scenario that through executive leadership, we would be requesting resources, whether they be dollars, bodies, professional services, things like that. So again, executive support. How we're going to be doing it, because this is a very large journey, this is something that is going to be, like I had mentioned, over multiple budgets, it's going to be a phased approach, right? Because we have, you know, some systems that maybe aren't quite ready to have it done yet, maybe some older computers, whatever that technology may be, we have to do it over a phased approach. And then the last kind of thing of how do we do it, is because this impacts everybody, not just IT, it's going to be a collaborative approach, right? We have to work with our customers, we have to work with them to make sure that we understand their needs, that we're hearing them, and we're not impacting, you know, how they're doing business, right? The reality is, I wish I could say the things that we're doing are not going to change people's business processes, but the sheer nature of what we're doing, Zero Trust, is going to have an impact on those. But part of our process is saying, okay, now you have this control, how do we help you do your job now with this control in place? Let's see. And then one of the last things about this that I wanted to express is, one of the things I always make sure that we're doing is, is we're looking for, through all these controls, I ask my team, what do we have now that will work, right? We don't want to always have to purchase something. We always want to try to reuse whatever we have, whether that's a piece of hardware or software or PSPG. What do we have now that will work? So that's kind of glossed over really fast, it's a really complicated topic, but wanted to give you guys a high level. The one thing I did want to kind of share with you, there's two additional pages. The middle page is basically all of those little bubbles have little acronyms next to them, and I know that means absolutely nothing to you guys. So we tried to give you a list of really what those bubbles are and where they fall, and really what are they doing, high level, right? What kind of protection are they giving to us? And then the last page, kind of wanted to share with you guys, that is our roadmap, right, of the, how we want to implement Zero Trust. The one thing I want to comment on there, what you'll notice, is that on that middle page, there's a whole lot of red active projects or items that are not on this last page. or items that are not on this last page. And the main reason for that is those red dots there that are not on this last page are things that we're doing through day-to-day operational work or they're projects, what we refer to as projops. They're not truly official PM-driven projects. So that's why they didn't make it on that list. But this list is much, much bigger than that, but these are truly the official projects we're working on. Any questions? There's a lot. All right. Thank you, guys.
I'm sorry, Councilman Fincher?
What is PSPG?
Policies, standards, procedures, and guidelines.
And what is that? I'm just kidding.
What to do and when? Happy to answer any questions for you. That was our presentation.
Just a comment. And I think Madam Mayor probably remembers this. When I came on to counsel here in 2013, it was two big concerns that we had. One was the finance, you know, just kind of how all that was being looked at and lack of. And then IT, right? We kind of teased that was bubble gun and duct tape and all this kind of kept things together. And here we're 10 years later. I mean, this team is solid. You guys have done a phenomenal job. You got a solid plan together. And I'm really pleased, and I'll take a little credit, right? Just saying that, really just where we was at 10 years ago and where we're at today, and just how you guys have been proactive for us looking at stuff. I know sometimes for me to log on is a pain in the butt. You get this little push code, you gotta do all this stuff, but I understand why. And I just say kudos to your team and you, just really doing a phenomenal job.
James, here, I have to go again.
Well, I got hit on speed dial, so I do call him every once in a while. He answers my calls. But really, just great job, really, really great job. So keep up the good work. Marty, Marley, I don't know, you, IT, any comments from you around what they're doing?
No, I mean, it looks, it looks good. It's everything I would expect a responsible organization of our size to be pursuing, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
So kudos to the team.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Look forward to the next meeting.
Yes, we like the update, so let's keep doing it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. We're getting closer here. Sound Transit, Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Council President. As you know, I'm the Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development, and we work closely with the two, we and Public Works work very closely with Sound Transit on these, on the huge body of work that they are undertaking in Kent right now. It's a lot of effort by staff, especially on the Federal Way Link Light Rail. But the kind of project that's in the wings right now, as you know, is the Downtown Garage. And I might be some troubles with that, that one. There, I'm sorry, came there in two, two separate. But I'll give you the short version. I know we're a little bit short on time. I'm here kind of just to check in. My update tonight on the Federal Way, or I'm sorry, on the Downtown Garage is kind of a continuation of what I've shared in the past, which is that we are going through Sound Transit's procurement.
I feel like you saw that on the news a few years back.
Is it me? So we're working through their process. They're procuring a contractor to really get into the design work. But I can tell, I can't tell you a lot right now because we're under special federal procurement guidelines that allow, that don't allow a lot of sharing of information. I can tell you, there was a response to the RFP to get a design-build contractor working on the project. Staff from Sound Transit and the city are reviewing those proposals right now. I can tell you that from what I've seen, they're all high quality. They all walk through the scheduling, the price, the design, a lot of details that we're looking at right now and trying to find the one that will do the best work for the city. I told you last time I was here, and this is still the headline to me, that the project is delayed until 2027. That's something that Sound Transit announced back in January. I told you this last time, but to me, that's still the top headline. It'll just take longer due to the fact that Auburn, they've packaged Auburn and Kent together. They're trying to sync the two projects up so that they can work more effectively with the contractors and with the procurement. And each project has its own timelines. And so they're trying to bring those together by creating more of a buffer or giving a little more time there. So in addition to some staffing, you know, just commitments that they've had at Sound Transit. So we are tentatively, I hesitate to say this, but the latest number is that we'll look at breaking ground maybe in mid-2024 and working through '25 and '26. So again, big asterisk on that one. I will keep you posted as I learn more. That's all I have for tonight.
We totally understand.
Yeah. It's quite a process, so happy to answer any questions.
You guys good?
Matt, I hope you took the fly with you, so I'm ready. Yeah, good evening, Council. I'm here to get, Derek Hawkes here to give a quick update on the Federal Way Link Extension Project. I have Mark Madhy with me. Just a quick reminder, I'm the project liaison for the KDM Station down to 259th, and then Mark takes over Structure C and goes down to Star Lake Station, so. But I'm giving the update this week. Kelly couldn't be here tonight. He regrettably is on vacation, so. Good for Kelly. But he probably wanted to be here, so anyways.
Sure.
So quick, yeah, quick update. I'm gonna try to, I got a lot of slides, so I'll try to go through these pretty quick. Most are just pictures. Please ask any questions as we go along. Mark and I happy to answer those, so. Quick reminder, here's the segment. So starting to the left is north. So KDM Road is in this area, running down to KDM Station and Garage, and then over to Midway Landfill, and then we go all the way down. This is Structure C at 259th, which is, talk about a little bit that more tonight. And then over to Star Lake Stations over here, and then the garage is down here. And then Structure Z is crossing 272nd, and then we get into Federal Way. And they're working with Sound Transit. Couple of recent progress on KDM Station and Garage. Utility works pretty much complete. Concrete roadway paving is mostly complete on 30th and the adjacent roadways. I don't know if you've been out there recently. They were putting some temporary pavement markings to try to get traffic in both directions. So yeah, a big change on the roadway since our last update, I think, was in January. The Structure B guideway deck and track is complete pretty much to Midway, heading south. Station work is progressing. Garage architectural cladding is installed. Canopy and elevator shafts are mostly complete. Like a lot of progress we're really seeing the station kind of come together now. Here's some pictures. Wanted to thank IT Group. We just heard from them. But Kevin and Josh did some drone shots for us, and they do this every update. Greatly appreciated. I think it really tells a story of what's happening here. So here, you're looking, looking east, you can see the guideway, the station, the garage in the background. You can see the bus, the bus turnaround here. Concrete roadways, nine inches of concrete, like, yeah, a lot of work's been done over the last six months there. This is looking north, just a different image. Lot of construction vehicles still out there, a lot, yeah, very active construction site. I like this picture too, kind of a good zoomed-in version of the station and the garage in the background. You can see the cladding on the garage is really, really kind of taking shape, that orange cladding. The mock-up, old mock-up of the station looking kind of southwest. We have a couple of pictures here kind of show what today that looks like. So a lot of finished work kind of happening, but it's taken shape. And I'll show a picture, but if you look up in the glass up here, we got some artwork already in, some of the, yeah, the glass is already going into the station. They're doing a lot of things all at once. This is up on the station platform itself, so looking down the stairway. And then looking, looking north along the track into Des Moines on the right. Yeah, the tracks all in, railings are up. Here's this artwork, which looks, I think, looks really nice. Yeah, just kind of interesting to see that the roof under that overhang and the artwork's already installed. Yeah, there's so much other work happening, so. And then a picture looking west. I like the, of course, the Puget Sound in the background. And that's the bus turnaround next to the garage. Focus on the garage. There's the entrance there. The canopy is a rendering. This flies back. Looking east, just some other pictures from the guideway. Of course, the drone shots, I think, do much better shape. This is looking the roadway itself, so looking north on the left and south on the right. And again, that should be open. I think that's open to two-way traffic, although it hadn't been up there this week. Moving forward for Segment One, KDM Station Interior Exterior Finishes, Elevator Escalator Installation, the garage is elevator installation, continuing garage finishes on all levels and painting, artwork in the garage, and then other construction activities, lot of site work. Parking lot at Highline College, landscaping irrigation. Rush through these a little bit. Structure C, so this is, this is the big holdup for the project. This is the reason why we're going from 2024 to 2026. And I'll talk about schedule here in a second. But this is where on Wash Dots, the soil slopped off, and we had, this is a wetland, McSorley's Wetland. Wash Dot, I'm not, sorry, not Wash Dot. QWIT got a, and Sound Transit did a $72 million change order to redesign the section of the track. So this is what's called the long span. I don't know if you've heard of the long span discussion. But this will be large piles, poured in concrete, large columns, and then there'll be a 500-foot section span, and then like 200, 2, 300-foot section span. So they're trying to span this wetland, and I think these, how far are these going down? Like 110 feet? Yeah, so really, I mean, this picture is great. The next picture, I mean, there's a generator on the left down at the bottom. This rebar cage is just pretty incredible. Mark and I went out there last week, and yeah, a lot of, a lot of work happening here. Very complicated site, like, but this is, this is the result, this is resulting the delay in the project overall. There's some other auxiliary reasons, but this is the main one, so. Structure C going forward, so they're drilling shafts and structure foundation, you know, constructing the columns, doing the long-span pier tables, setting typical span girders, the superstructure and the deck, and then miscellaneous earthwork. It's going to be really interesting, too, when they pour these, this long span, so they're going to pour between columns and support that. It's not, they're not bringing in a 500-foot section, so. Yeah, as an engineer, that'd be pretty cool to see. But, and then recent progress on Star Lake Station. I think Star Lake's made the biggest leap forward in the way that looks. You know, we're really getting out of the ground. We're really, you know, the concrete road on 272nd is ongoing, but I think we have the westbound lanes complete. We're on the eastbound. The garage, the concrete pores are complete, working on interior, exterior finishes, plumbing, electrical. The walls and platforms are complete at the station, working on glass installation. Again, we're already putting in glass, interior, exterior finishes, plumbing, electrical. Guideways between the station and Structure Z are complete. So Z, Structure Z goes over 272nd, so that's, that part's done. Move on here. Some drone images, again, from our IT department. So this is looking kind of south. You see the garage. Yeah, the thousand-car garage, and then the station's over here in the background. And again, the station's different from KDM, and that KDM's a center platform, and then the trains come on either side. This one, the trains come in the middle, and there's a platform for each direction on the outside of those, so. Yeah, great, great shot here, though. And this is looking north, so yeah, the garage is just very massive. And then the forefront there is the stormwater pond, and there's another stormwater pond in the back. But you see the, you see the concrete roadway on 272nd already taking place in the westbound lane. Quick rendering of Star Lake Station, looking north. And then you see these two pictures here from, you know, a little different angle, but you know, you kind of really see that taking shape. Yeah, a lot of the glass is already, already up on the platform. This is looking south on the left, so yeah, the platform's making good progress. You know, there's not, there's no track. There's, you know, that's just all dirt, still access, construction access to the site. And on the right's looking south from, on the, on the ground outside the station. And the garage is, yeah, the garage is coming together. They're working on a lot of the finishes, as we just talked about. And then there's a retaining wall on 272nd. You've probably already seen that as you driven by. This is, you come, come out of Star Lake Station, make a right on the 272nd. This is, this is that wall. Moving forward, Construction Segment Two. So Star Lake, continuation of the platform and the canopy construction, station interior, exterior finishes, elevator installation, start of commissioning. The garage is miscellaneous structural steel, stairs and cables, garage interior and exterior, MEP, mechanical electrical plumbing installation. They're doing commissioning there, too. Other construction activities, got a lot of site work, utility work, roadway restoration, lot, lot going on on that site. It's, it's behind KDM Station just because of the way they're sequencing their work, but also making a lot of good progress. This is just a summary slide of our NDC and permit revision process. So these numbers go up every, every presentation, but we have about 1,064 NDCs. These are design changes. It's a design-build project, lots, lots of changes during the project. So not all of those are Kent-reviewed, you know, Federal Way, Des Moines, others are reviewing some of those. But 298 permit revisions approved by City of Kent, and a permit revision, maybe multiple different changes that are kind of combined into one permit. So Mark and I are always busy with Alex Lu. Yeah, always busy trying to get these approved. Matt and Transportation and EDC, you know, lots of other groups fire up, review these NDCs as well. And then there's 178 NDCs currently in design, so continuing to change things. Wanted to give an update. I don't think we've presented this before, too, but as part of the environmental impact statement, there were some traffic mitigation projects that Sound Transit was required to do. There were six, and thanks to our transportation team, they eliminated two of those. But I'll go into each one of these, but Pack Highway and KDM Road, Military Road and Reef Road, 272nd and Star Lake Road, and then Pack Highway and 272nd. So this is, yeah, SR99 and KDM Road. So we're, we're basically adding a right-turn lane and a signalized connection there. We're redoing this island and kind of lengthening that crosswalk. There's some other little miscellaneous improvements. But yeah, the Sound Transit's had to acquire this property at the end because we're impacting, we're building sidewalk, planter strip to Midway Design Standards, and there'll be an eight-foot sidewalk on 99, and then transition to a 10-foot sidewalk on Kent, Des Moines. Next location was Reef Road and Military, so heading, heading westbound, there's a right-turn pocket, and we'll add the curb gutter sidewalk there. It's pretty much just a shoulder there, and yeah, this, this will be a big improvement. Help, help traffic flow better through this intersection as well. Let's see, 272nd and at Star Lake Road, we're adding a, I don't know if you can see this that well, these little arrows, but a left-turn lane across so people can get on the Star Lake Road and also get into these apartments. And then by doing that, we're having to shift the eastbound curb gutter sidewalk south a little bit to make room for that left-turn pocket. So, and then there's a median to the right of that, too. So yeah, a lot of these aren't huge improvements. This is, yeah, this is quite a bit for that right turn onto Star Lake Road, but again, warranted by the environmental documentation, so. And the last site is 272nd and Pack Highway, and this is adding a pedestrian island. So trying to, we've talked a lot about safety tonight, but trying to shorten the distance for people crossing the road, shortening those crosswalks, and then not doing a right-turn pocket onto 272nd. So yeah, that's the mitigation projects that are required because of the Sound Transit project, but not necessarily at the Sound Transit projects. Just wanted to hit two more slides, so project closeout moving forward and schedule. There's a lot involved with the proper, street vacations, so giving up right away and also dedicating us new right away. Mostly, I would say more so at the KDM Station, but there's also a lot at Star Lake. So that's a process. There's tons of parcels. We're, you know, as we're developing, I'm adding roads. There's just a lot of, a lot of work that will start to happen there. ASBILts, we've actually got in one ASBILT recently, but kind of working on our process, making sure we're getting those the way we want them. And then, but there'll be a slew of new ASBILTS, and then project closeout process as well. To give you a quick update on schedule, so KDM Station and Star Lake Garage Integration Testing will be in April of 2024. Substantial completion for both stations are in. Substantial completion for both stations are in August of 2024. Sound Transit acceptance of all work is going to be January 2026. This is their contract, Sound Transit's contract with QWIT. And again, much of that or most of that was because of Structure C work. After that, Sound Transit will do some testing. How long that takes, they're trying to, they haven't told us a date yet. They're trying to program that in, but it's relying on their staff and all the other projects they got going on. I've heard three to six months, but I just put six months there for now. We'll get you more information as that comes. So revenue service date still to be determined, so. And then as always, we'll have, we just got a drone flyover from, from Sound Transit. Greatly appreciate that, and I will email that out to Council probably tomorrow, so. Yeah, that's, that's a lot, kind of compact into a short amount of time. But any, any questions, happy to answer those. Mark, right, so.
Hey, great presentation. It's nice to keep seeing things moving forward. I know early on, we were talking about the restroom and just security around the restroom. Do you know as far as the bathroom in that area, how secure it is or gonna be?
You talking about during construction or after construction?
After construction, once they get it up and running.
I don't know. Mark, do you know? Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, I know that, yeah.
Did we talk about that, remember Dana, for us just making sure?
There's a continuing, ongoing conversation around station security with, with Sound Transit.
I would add to that, another concern we have is that, you know, the station's going to be pretty much done relatively soon, right? And then because of Structure C, there's this year and a half, two-year time period between, yeah, the station's being mostly complete and going into revenue service. So that, that's another thing that Kelly and I have already talked about, thinking about, yeah.
On a good news front, Sound Transit has been in the process of hiring additional security. They've got a couple of different forms that it takes, but we're seeing that in other places around the system. And 100%, we're, we're working with them on a regular basis, talking about what does this look like when it's not occupied? How do you keep it? How do you keep it nice so that it's nice when it's ready for people to come and those kind of things? Those are all concerns that we have been consistently voicing and will continue to do.
Any other question, remember, councilmembers?
Thank you, Council.
Hey, great presentation. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay. Hey, we're gonna join here for about 32 minutes. Thank you.